Monthly meeting to order, the good, Mr. Keith say the prayer.
Yes, sir.
Father come to unite this praise your name and give us a good day, dear Lord, thank you for the help you blessed us with, the ability to come out and do work here in the county for your loters, and pray you'll be with us tonight, guide our thoughts and our actions to be pleasing to you, dear Lord, and we'll do the things that's best for Mira County, we'll always lift you up in all the things we do in Houston, I pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We need to make an add on to the agenda for the vote for the floss. Need to add that, need a motion to add vote for floss.
That's what I intergoverned agree.
Intergovern.
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? One. Minutes. About that time of the minute, everything is in order, need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Financial reports, they were sent to you, I think, still getting wasted in paper today. So, everything is in order, need a motion to approve.
I make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's do the EDF light year.
Ron running the red lights on the four, around four there, please just give it here a few minutes.
So, I talked with, I tell you, with EDF, and he had asked me about the, if you guys have looked over at the ordinances in the MOU. And I told him that on the ordinances, you know, we also sent the attorney that he hadn't got back to. He is wanting to do a workshop with the board, him and I guess another, what's the other guy's name?
Rayne Cotton.
Rayne Cotton. Mr. Keith, those are the ones that we met, they want to come down and just do a workshop with you guys, and that way, everybody talk about the ordinance together and then talk about the MOU, because I also told them that, you know, it takes a little time to get the, you know, to talk about the tax abatements and stuff like that. So, that'd be a good time, if y'all want to do it next month, in October, I can set, I can set up a date to do that and get them down here. We'll do that, but anyway, I just, I just told them, it took y'all a while, that you know, I gave it to y'all, and just, y'all just review it. So, that's what we're all about.
Why don't you schedule a meeting?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll look at the schedule, and then we'll, we'll have it over here, and in fact, I was going to tell y'all, this will probably be the only time we'll have it at the courthouse, this meeting, we're going to try to start meeting over at the city, at the new city theater, that's a little bit better, and we'll, we'll try to get that, because we can't move these tables anymore. So, I'm going to start working on scheduling that, you know, every, every meeting. Yeah, and I'll try to get that over too, or we can have it over there at Debbie's Conference Center, that's probably a good, a good idea to have there.
All right, so we're waiting, yeah, let's move on to new business, building update.
Right, so, we, we finished construction on the courthouse, the two, two tax assessor offices will be moved to this side of the courthouse. We have, I guess you'd say ninety-nine percent completed the move from the other building to the new building, and we're just going to wait for, for the, to get the tax assessors made, that's what we're still waiting on. But other than that, we're, we're going to start cleaning up the back, I need to talk to Andy about that, and then we're going to, we've already made a plan to go ahead and put that crusher run in the front to go ahead and make that parking.
Can anybody see this on TV where the new address and then?
So, the new county commission address is going to be one eleven North First Street. It's the old tax assessor building, right across from the Norris.
Any questions on that? Shooting range update?
So, we met with DNR, I'd say about two weeks ago now, and they, they confirmed that the, the money has been put into the, the budget to go ahead and start redoing the shooting range, Mr. Keith, you were there, and I think Lainey, you were there, wasn't you?
Yeah.
So, the first, the first round of money, they're going to take it and remediate the, the burns, go ahead and knock them down, get all the lead out, I think they said it was like a three to five year process that they were supposed to do, but I think it's gone on what, twenty years that they haven't cleaned no lead? So, they're going to take that first batch and, and get that cleaned up. And then I think they talked about maybe five shoot, five rifle range, five pistol range, archery, trap shooting, skeet shooting. And they were, they were moving forward, actually, the girl did email me, said they were moving forward with the environmental study to find out that there was that brown.
South Salamander up there.
If it was out there, they would have to move it to a different location, but it's on track, and, you know, move slow, and, you know, I think they, they're understanding now, you know, you heard where they said that they, they came back out, it's got, they got to do. So, that's it on that.
Any questions on that? All right. Five thirty-one one regional transit.
This is a resolution that we sign every year, is to, is to allow them to provide, to get the grants for that transit bus that goes around. So, I just need you to, to y'all to approve it, so we can sign it.
Need a motion to sign the resolution for the regional transit.
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The floss intergovernmental agreement?
You know, we met with the city, what, last Monday, or last Tuesday, and y'all tend to be both agreed to go ahead and pass that floss intergovernmental agreement. So, we just need formally vote to go ahead and have it on record.
So, need a motion to approve?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve, intergovernmental agreement.
Make motion.
Second.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go to department reports.
You can wait, you can wait on it.
That's what I'm saying.
Do you want to come on, you want to come on up?
That's your strategy. You can, you, you can come on. We're ready. Oh, God. Right behind here, where's, where's the best place you want me to be? This is temporary for us, so anywhere you want to stand. Right here's good, we mean it. I'm Ron, I work with ACCG Retirement Services, and I service the retirement plan for Mira County employees in the county. And been talking with the county manager a good bit about the plan, and what it means, and how it works, and what it does for the employees, that's the main thing, is the benefit is being offered to the employees, and what they get out of it. You have two plans here, one's a defined benefit plan, or pension, as they call it, the old term is pension, that has a sixty-five-year-old, sixty-five is the age you have to be to be able to be eligible to retire, sixty-five with at least five years with the county. There is an early option, that's sixty with at least ten years, but it comes with a drastic reduction in the benefits, about half of the benefit amount at sixty. So, there's really no early options in the plan. So, as a, I'm not suggesting one way or the other, just letting you know what it is, is what some options are, and what some of your neighboring counties have. As far as, I think y'all all compete for the same employees, you know, within a certain range here. And, and we service all of the counties around here, so looking at that, we spoke about what other counties are doing, and some have what they call an unreduced early option, where somebody is a long-term employee, because you may hire somebody in at twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three years old, well, they'd have to work here forty-five years to be eligible to start benefit, versus some plans have an unreduced early, which is maybe fifty-five, or maybe sixty, with some years of service attached to that. Those are things that if you were inclined to look at them, we'd be glad to provide some information on. There's also, I'm going to say the last thirty years or so, what we see a lot of places doing is the other plan you have is what they call a four fifty-seven, four fifty-seven B technically. In our R S code, you probably hear four oh one K more than anything, four oh one K is private industry. I tell people like Procter and Gamble, McDonald's, et cetera, you have a four oh one K. Then there's four oh three Bs, which is churches, schools, not-for-profits, you'll see that, and that four fifty-seven B is governmental. It just says where y'all work. There are little nuances to them, but it's really, hey, that number tells me where I work. Somebody kind of looked at me and says, hey, I have a four fifty-seven, what about, oh, you work for a government agency somewhere. Well, your four fifty-seven is a hundred percent voluntary, so your employees that participate do so with no incentive. They know that what we talk about when we are educating employees about retirement is social security, we talk about income replacement ratios, how much money do you need to have coming in from different sources to be able to choose to work or not? And we talk about social security, and I know social security is a controversial subject. If we don't have some changes before twenty thirty-four, we're talking seventy, seventy-five percent of the obligations being met. So, if no changes happen, somebody's benefits going to be cut twenty-five, thirty percent, because that's what the trust fund can handle. But we talk about that, currently, the facts on the benefit statement say that if you worked thirty-five years in the system, and you're full retirement age, most of your workforce was born nineteen sixty or after now, so full retirement age for them, for those individuals are sixty-seven. So, if you worked thirty-five years, make it to sixty-seven and start your benefit, coordinate the social security statement you will get, it's going to replace about forty percent of your salary. Well, we know that's not enough to live. We talk about your defined benefit plan or your pension, most government employees going to work somewhere, if they stay in your place of employment, born here, raised here, work here, et cetera, that, and that's not unusual. The sixteenth of this month, I'll have forty years of government work, so, I mean, that's just what we do. And most of them's around thirty years though when they get ready to retire, and your plan that gives them about thirty percent. So, you're looking around seventy percent income replacement, and a lot of people would look at that and say, hey, that's not too bad. But nobody here wants a thirty percent pay cut today, and you're not going to want it when you get there. So, we look at the four fifty-seven as that third part that supplements, or bridges the gap, or adds to it, whatever it may be, is a supplemental plan. To put with those other two, that you, you provide the pension, you provide the opportunity for the four fifty-seven, and employee has to participate on their own to try to make up the difference there. Some do very well, some don't participate at all, et cetera. So, what we're seeing across the state is a lot of what we call hybrid plans. You have basically, it's a little different, but you have your defined benefit plan in place, and then you incentivize your employees to save for themselves by doing some type of small match. I say small, that's very subjective, everybody's got a different budget, everybody has a different set of employees, everybody got different salaries. Small is very subjective. But we, we design these plans that says, you know what, if you stay with us thirty years between the defined benefit plan, and if you participate in this with a match, you'll wind up with about a sixty percent income replacement. If you decide not to stay with us, that plan is portable, as a vesting schedule, which means they got to stay long enough to be vested, but that plan is a hundred percent portable, we know that people across our country aren't saving enough for retirement, we know that, the statistics show that everywhere. That's not a huge, oh my gosh, everybody knows that. What are employers doing to try to recruit and retain employees? This is what, some combination of this is what we're seeing. The hybrid plan is becoming more popular, because if they stay, they get the defined benefit, that's a guaranteed check for life they can't outlive. The defined contribution to four oh one, four, four fifty-seven type environment, this is pretty much a cash bucket that says you manage this, and if you manage it right, you put these two together, then you, you've hit your income replacement ratio. Just want to talk about that, so going back and saying, there are options in your pension plan to look at and say, hey, you know, we probably haven't reviewed this in a long time, let, let's sit down and look at the options. How do we recruit and retain our employees? What can we do for those long-term employees? Again, budgetary talk, design talk, et cetera. The other is, is a hybrid fit is, does a different DB fit is, does both, what, what does? And I think that's part of the conversation that county manager and I have been having is, let's look at our plans as we haven't looked at it in a while, and just say, hey, let's review this and see what's out there. You may need zero changes, but I think the process of going through the review, sitting down, going through the review, is a great process to look and see what options are out there, do we need to make a change, do we not need to make a change? And I realize, I always start those out with, let's look at everything, you'll say, somebody's going to say this, I like that. Well, that turns into, how much does that cost? Is there any cost? Because some things don't cost, most things do, it's just a matter of how you allocate funds. So, I think that's really, what I'm here to talk about is that, I would love to make some time to sit down and review the plan, I know we can't have it on the forum, but review the plan at y'all's leisure, and say, this is what you have, this is what is available, what's the combination, if, if any changes, what would you like to see? We could work that up and let you know what it looks like.
We really don't have a lot of people in that four fifty-seven.
Compared to the number of employees you have, you have a very low participation rate, and.
Because it's not matched, I think that's.
That's the main issue, is there's no incentive to, other than the pure education of, hey, you know what, you really do need to save money. Nobody else is going to take care of you, the county's already taking care of you a lot with the pension plan. I just, people say, well, it's only that, listen, there's no cost to the employee, you come to work, and you get the pension plan, what a benefit. But there's no incentive to make that other gap full, and people don't realize that one day, mentally, physically, or both, they won't be able to do what they do today. Unfortunately, sometimes it's also, hey, thank you for your service, we don't, we don't need you to work here anymore. Those days come, what are you going to do when that day gets there? Well, if you're not sixty-seven, if you're not sixty-two even, if you're not, what, what are you going to do? Well, you're going to have something that bridges you to the next job, or bridges you into retirement. And without a plan, and I tell this all the time, I said, you would never ever get up in the morning, wake your family up, and say, hey, let's go get in the truck, in the truck or the car, and let's go. Where are we going? I don't know, let's just go. Well, how long are we going to be going? I don't know, let's just go. Nobody does that, everybody has a plan, if you go on vacation, you already know where you're going, where you're staying, what you're doing. We don't look at our financial life that way, and I think this is part of what we need to educate employees on, and provide something, the tools to, to say, hey, let's get you across the hump. Because it's really not happening across our country right now, it really isn't, I mean, you can throw all the numbers out there you want to. We're, as a country, we're in debt, as individuals, we're in debt. You know, we talk about student loan debt being one point seven trillion, credit card debt's over a trillion now. We spend money, we're good at spending, best in the world, I think. We spend all ours, and then we go get somebody else's and spend it. But we're not good at saving money, and I believe there's a balance, enjoy your life, and have one, enjoy it. But when you get older, whatever that age is to you, I like people to have a choice, to say, hey, I don't have to. It's kind of like when I hear my parents say, because I said so, I didn't like that then, I don't like it now, so get a choice. But when you get there, you should be able to do what you choose to do, versus, what are you doing this, what are you doing tomorrow? I have to go to work. Yeah, we have to for a while, but sooner or later, it should be, what are we doing? No, I can't do that, I'm going to go to work tomorrow. There's a choice, life's always better when you have choices. And I tell employees this a lot, retirement doesn't happen overnight, and I can't stand putting ages on it, but that's what the plans are. I tell people, because I, I'm from South Georgia, lived here so far all my life. So, I say it this way, retirement's like a crop pot, you got to put it over there and forget about it. Every once in a while, y'all cook with a crop pot? Everybody does, sometimes. Every once in a while, you'll say, I need to go check them, you'll lift that lid, taste it, maybe add some seasoning to it. That's where we tell employees over time, just because you started this amount, that doesn't mean that's the amount you need to stay in. Every once in a while, you got to add a little seasoning to the pot. And over time, it starts smelling good, that crop, it's got to be getting close to an end. When you look at that retirement account, you get forty-five, fifty, fifty-five, you start seeing a difference, you're like, hey, it ain't going to be long before we eat. That's what I try to equate it to, because that's, everybody expects it to be like that microwave. And I tell people, just go buy a scratch off, you got the same choice, you're probably not going to win. And if you try to microwave retirement, it ain't going to win. You know, it's just the way it is, so we try to, again, review the plans, see what's best for your employee base, and your budget, and your community, what is best that fits you, and so let's design it that way, there, it may be perfect, but I don't think we've had a review in a long time. Any questions about anything? I will look forward to, hopefully, a meeting, but that's up to y'all, just let me know.
We can have a workshop.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
We can have a workshop.
Yeah, we can do whatever they want, but I mean, that's, I just, I'm a trip.
We're just getting over to get with you and visitation.
Yeah, I visit every three months, and so, Faye's got the schedule and calendar, but I'm just, and I don't mind coming any other time, of course. I mean, I live about Iowa fifteen minutes from here, so it's not that big of a deal. But yeah, just get Doug to reach out, we'd be glad to put whatever you want to together for that.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you, thank y'all. Thank you.
Department report?
So, fueling station, if you look at it, we're, we're pretty much, we exceed two semi-loads a month now, we're, we're working on three. So, it is going up, the school's back in, we're swinging, so that's, we're pretty good, we hadn't had any problems with that. Andy, you want to kind of, I know we talked about that side on mower, and I, I sent out the pictures, you want to kind of just talk to them about that?
Yeah, the side on mower that we're running, it's probably sixteen, seventeen years old, got a lot of power on it. A new one, I priced a new one, it's seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. We found the one that y'all got pictures of online, looks really good to me, and the guy said he would sell it for. And the guy said he would sell it for sixty-seven fifty, and the paint's still under the deck of. And I'd like to see if we might could get that one there. Maybe not exactly replace the one we got, it's still running, but when we get this next trip around the county moment, I'd like to take one of them tractors and put to it, maybe we could run two of them, and get some of the weeds knocked down on dirt roads. And then when the other one quits, we'll still have one, and we can continue running. mower looks real good to me, you know, and the one we got, no wire in it, it's just getting weak and old, and... It, you know, it kinda does a rough little job out there every day, so, you know, that's up to y'all. Y'all wanna think about buying that one? We'll buy it, go get it, bring it home, put it to use.
Is that it?
Yeah, if you haven't seen it.
Where's that located at, Andy?
Sir?
Where's that one located at?
It's over in the edge of Alabama, I don't know the name of the little town, it's, you know, it's a couple hour drive to go get it. But the man said he had plenty of stuff to load it. What I like about it is when you actually look through the pictures, when he's got one of the deck up, and the paint's not even wore out from under the deck. You hear Mr. Keith was talking about it, that's probably the original set of blades it's under. You know, I mean, the mower looks, like it's in really good shape, and we had some more pictures where he had it stored in a barn, you know, so, I mean...
Didn't you say he also owns an equipment company?
Yeah, he, he buys and sells some equipment, you know, he had, you know, some other things that was online, but that's the only thing we was looking at, was that. And, uh, the only other thing I had is, um, we required for grant money to do striping. We wanted to put up a good many of those flashing signs at some of the bad intersections. We've looked at several places to get those signs from, but we found one that was... Signs are gonna be about four thousand dollars cheaper than where we had been looking. But what I'd like to do is get two. And go get them two put up, make sure we, you know, got them up, they're working good, they like everybody, you know, everybody likes them. Because it's a good bit of money that we're gonna spend when we buy them all. And I'd rather note it, you know, we got, this is gonna work for us before we go spend...
We've already got that, we've already got that money, isn't it?
Yeah, the money's here, and, um, we're gonna have to do some shoulders with it, you know, when we paint the edge lines. So we got some work to do on that, but the signs, they're kinda costly. So I'd like to get two, and let's get them up, get them working, you know, before we go spend a pile of money, because they may not, you know, we might need to go somewhere else and get them, they may not work good, or... Just don't know a lot about them till we try, if that's okay with y'all. You know, I, I think y'all have to work it too, when you get them. So we get two, get them up, and look at them, and if everybody likes them, we'll, you know, move forward with the rest of it. And that's all I got.
Hold on, we got the money?
We got a check now there, so maybe we, we're gonna do that, T-Spot's gonna get, we can do the math. We can't do that either, plus.
I'm talking about for the mower.
Oh, for the mower, the six thousand? Now, I would suggest just take the money out of T-Spot's and not finance it, and that little amount, which will be paid interest on, on six thousand, huh? So there's the money at T-Spot's.
Oh, it, it just hooks to a three-point hitch on the tractor, um, Mr. Keith's actually seen it run here recently, and... I think he can tell you that, you know, we go down a road with it, on a road that just has weeds on it, it makes the road look a lot better, and I run in a lot of him, limb cutters, and... They don't have to cut the weeds, you know, the weeds is already gone, and they come through and make a lot better time on the road. And I'd like to kinda get...
So you're out there in the wintertime when you're not mowing, right away?
Yeah, I run one, I'm running one all the time.
You would hook this up, and you, and utilize your help to do this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We gonna run this, what I'll do is the whole one, I'll let it rest a little, we'll run this one all year long. And during the winter, I'll hook that one up, let one of the mowing guys, you know, really, we, we'll run two. Or we'll run two as much as we can, but most time I can't until the wintertime, but the one we running is kinda getting, you know, a little wear to it, to where it's been giving us a little problem, and it's gonna get worse. You know, I don't know how much I can keep it running, you know? It needs to run every day, it makes a big difference. Like, right now, we had all that rain, and it just blew up dog finnels, and, you know, that's a lot of what's hanging over in your road. That little mower, Mr. Keith will tell you, we did it, did some roads out there in his district recently that, it was like night and day on that road, you know, and it was just weeds. Limb cutter, some of them don't even need the limb cutter, they can go down it after you cut the weeds. But, you know, that's what, y'all will continue to run the one we got, or it's just, it's just getting a lot of wear to it. You know, it, it wears out, it's wearing out.
You making money to purchase it? Do you have a second?
With T-Spot's?
With T-Spot's, I'm making money.
Second?
Second, Mr. Keith's second, and all the papers.
I don't know. Thank y'all.
You going to mow?
I won't go to mow probably, but I'll get it. And it really makes a big difference on the road. Like in Jones District, I rode down Casey Garden Road the other day, all the trees is cut back. But the dog finnels is, and when it rains, they lay over in the road. If we run that machine down it, that road will be back thirty-five, forty foot wide. Makes a big difference on a lot of, we put out a lot of fires where we get calls about limb cutters. We take that and go put out a lot of fires with it.
The one thing I like about it, it's cheaper to run than a limb cutter, too.
It moves faster, you know, and it makes the limb cutter move a little faster, because he can go in on a road where that's been done, and all he's got to do is cut the over top. He's done cut six foot high down it. Um, what about the signs, y'all good with just getting two, and let's get them up and try them? Because I'm...
Put them on the most dangerous road, stop intersection.
Well, you got Griggs Lucille, you got out there on three ten there at, on White's Bridge. I mean, we got some bad intersections, but we got some that we was gonna put double signs on, one on both sides of the road. We had some we was gonna put just a single sign on. So I figured we'd take a road that was gonna do the single, and just put one up, you know, put, put one up, let's see if we can get it up, get it operate, get it, you know, in, in operating condition, and see if everybody likes it. Because there's difference. You know, Mr. Keith was talking about, he had saw some that were early deal around, and then, you know, there's all different kinds of them. I wanna make sure everybody's happy with them, because that's right at thirty thousand dollars we gonna spend on them. So I kinda like to put one up, make sure it's working, that everybody likes, you know, before we spend a pile of money on something that don't work.
That's grant money.
That's grant money, so that's not, yeah, it's not coming out of the budget.
Yeah, that's coming out of the grant. And we got the money.
Do you have anything?
Yes, sir, not much, you got any questions for me?
Okay, any questions for Jim?
One thing, too, lately, you mentioned about wanting to, uh, advertise to the community when we got the grant. So it sounds like we've actually got the, the money now, so we can start promoting where the signs are supposed to be put at.
Right, and to give me a list, like...
We're going to boot with Seminole County, they got a rotivator, and, um, they got it hooked up. They talked to Mr. Keith about it this week, and we gonna clip some shoulders and see if that machine, you know, that's a three, four thousand dollar machine that'll go along and churn up all that excess dirt and grass. And we're gonna get with them, and they had talked to Mr. Keith last week about, they had it hooked up, and we gonna go look at that. And we got a list of roads to do the striping on, but we'll update that, we'll run that by y'all. And if y'all got a road you wanna throw in there, and look at all that before we concrete that on what we gonna strip, but then we need to cut the edge lines, you know, clip shoulders on the edge line where they can paint that white line. Um, I'm assuming we wanna do what we've been doing, center line, white line, and raised pavement mark. Um, I think all the signs are really in decent shape, and we can get a lot of stripes put down on the road, you know, if we just do strip. If that's, you know, what y'all wanna do. And we'll wait on the rain, and we'll get, start clipping some of them, because it's a little dry right now.
It's the flowers.
Yeah, actually, you could start a good fire with that motor grader, and that, them sparks flying off the asphalt and that dry grass, so...
Mr. Chair, would y'all like to have copies of the DOT's, um, of traffic modification?
We went back and ran in three mowing tractors today, the grass kinda got a little bit of hittos. So I put a third one back out there today, we gonna run that third one as much as we can, and try to cover some roads, get the grass knocked down. We had a few breakdowns, it kinda set the pattern, so we gonna try to run all three of us.
Um, we will need a county, the DOT will need a county resolution. When we, when we get to that point of the plans, um, city council has already approved it. We did have a engagement meeting tonight just to talk through any of the community's concerns or questions. Uh, DOT was here, Mr. Powell was here. Thanks for joining. If you have any questions, I'm gonna get touch with me.
Any questions, when we do that? So, you know, the questions, I need the motion to go into a negative session for person number? I'd like the motion to go to negative session, say?
I say.
And there were more questions, need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second.
Sir.
Call the table.
Aight.